I'd like to welcome you all to today's regular meeting. Today is February 5, 2019. It is 9:04. I will try to get us back on schedule. Commissioners, so... Lieutenant, would you please call Row?
Commissioner Farrow.
President.
Chairman Gago.
President.
Commissioner Merron. Commissioner Blakenmore.
President.
And Vice Chair Donald.
President.
All right. Thank you. The next item is inspirational motion. We have Sherri Ryan, Pastor of Litto Methodist Church.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to welcome the new pastor of Litto Methodist Church. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Just as I introduce myself, I'm Sherri Ryan, and I have followed Steve Wire. I came in July of 2018. As many of you know, Litto is the home of Shared Table. And this year is our 25th anniversary. So we thank everyone for all of the support that they have provided to Shared Table. We continue to serve about 200 households twice a month, year-round. And we're really closely with all the other food factories to make sure that all food gets maximized throughout the community, including Carson, Inquesta, Penney Osko. So we just want to say thank you for all the support. And be on the lookout for some new things that are coming in 2019 to celebrate 25 years of opportunity. And now if you would join with me in prayer. Oh, Holy One, we thank you for the privilege we have to live here, for the snow and the sun. We thank you for this community and the people we've come to know who are dedicated to making this county a place of well-being for all people. We pray for those in leadership, that they might guide us, that we can live peacefully in lives marked with kindness and dignity. So, oh, Holy One, we lift up this day down to you, that you grant them wisdom, strength, a continued sense of good humor, and that they may see with the eyes of their hearts. Be with them, protect them, and lead them, so that they may guide us. In God's name, all God's people said, amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the pledge allegiance. Sure, hope it for your use of the first. Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sure. We should echo that. This weekend, we lost a former county commissioner, James Durant, who had a big part in our community for almost 92 years. And I would ask that we do a moment of silence for former Commissioner James Durant. Thank you, Commissioner Farrow. Before we move on, would you please turn your phones off or to vibrate? There will be a cleaning, a squirting up theme. Is that cool? I didn't find this. I'm going to be sure that we're not casting. Have fun. Right. Next item, there's approval of the agenda. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion of second is made, assembled, please call Row.
Commissioner Merron, I'm sorry. Commissioner Blakenmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes.
Chairman Gago.
Yes. Next item is awards and recognitions. We have one item, A, is recognition of your service and award presented to many. Lee Hill, Mr. Quarterby.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so it was very sad to be asked, we did not remember resignation from Mr. Matthew Hill. So we wanted to take a moment to be to present him with recognition. So I just want to read what we're going to be presenting him with. With great honor and recognition, commendable and dedicated service, you are truly Taos County's finest. Thank you for the 11 years you have given to Taos County. Your tireless work ethic and professionalism has set the tone for the rest of the employees. Presented to my letter, Matthew Hill, with pride and respect and love, you will always have a home here. We wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors. Thank you for going and offering the honest service to the citizens of Taos County. So Mr. Hill is going to be missed far more than I ever will be. You will notice when he's not here, definitely. Every day, if he's not here, it will be something that Taos County employees will notice. We recently gotten some of these challenge points, and he's going to be one of the first recipients of this challenge point. But essentially, it's our Taos County logo, and on the back, just a receipt of this. The recipient of this coin has been recognized for outstanding commitment to Taos County. So, Mr. Hill, you definitely earned this. You earned all of our respect and admiration and recognition.
Thank you, Commissioners, if you don't mind. Yeah. Mr. Hill, you'll have to speak through the whole meeting. Sorry. I made you chairman, and this is the whole meeting. So you have to be respectful. Please be. Next item is item seven, this is the citizens' concerns. This is a moment that citizens wishing to speak shall have to live about five minutes. An election will be taken by this commission, but we will take those concerns and pass them on to the staff. If anyone wants to come up, come and put him to their stage, Ben. Mr. Chairman. This, Commissioner Farrow. You'll be my... I would appreciate... Commissioner Farrow, for those of you that don't remember, he was a special referee, one of the best ones we had. So he knows how to take time, so he'll take time for us today. But he's got certification, so he'll come back. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Peggy Nelson. I'm fairly certain I can do this in under five minutes. And I was hoping a few other people would be here on the same topic. If they show up, I think you guys were ahead of schedule. I said be here by 9:15. So I'm here once again, as I've done before, to talk to you about tax alternatives and county support for tax alternatives. You all may remember that last year, we passed a resolution in support of the bill before the legislature. There's another one, which I think has much improved over previous iterations of this bill. And as you recall, the issue arose out of the threat of the loss of land in Taos County and throughout the state because of increasing taxes. And New Mexico is fairly bereft of options in property taxes. I mean, aside from the commercial aspect, I would all do either have an agricultural special method evaluation or its full value. This bill, which is House Bill 332, sponsored by Bobby Gonzalez, as well as Carlos's nose, is in the House at the moment. It's coming up for a hearing next Tuesday, and I know that that's too early for you all to consider this. But I have some packets for you. I can come up and give them to you, and it includes the bill itself, an explanation sheet, your 2018 resolution, as well as your most recent climate change resolution. Thank you, Commissioner Farrow, for bringing that to the table. And I want to discuss those if I can. Taos County, you'd have to remind me exactly when it was passed, but adopted a very, very strong and nicely worded comprehensive plan that talks about the need in the future to maintain open space, maintain the sense of the place we live in, encourage agriculture, and do all of those things that we think are very important, not only for the health of this community in terms of growing food and other amenities that come with that, tourism, drawing people in, but also for my own sociological impacts of maintaining land in a land-based community and the culture that is wrapped around it. In addition, you've recently passed your climate change reservation, which, if you refer to it, I'm sure you all know exactly what it has to say. This is 2018-57. Talks about the various things that the county can do. You know, not only expanding solar energy and continuing the forest spinning on private lands as well as federal lands, but the conservation of water and health of the land. And I think that your support of this bill ties in with one of the means by which you can actually help support those goals that you have in the comprehensive plan and in your climate change resolution. There's a growing movement of young people who want to be farming. There's also a whole body of older people who stand to lose the land because they cannot afford the increase in taxes. One of the things that maybe you all heard about the Alianza Agropecura that I'm a part of as well, but that we're trying to do is link up those two. We want to give every bit of support that we possibly can to the creation of food in the future and holding open the farmlands that maybe now are not terrifically productive, but with slight increase in taxes, families can hold onto those lands and people can farm it in the future. We're coming before the House Agriculture and Water Resources Committee on Tuesday. As I said before, if we get past that, this bill stands a chance of actually going through tax and revenue and perhaps becoming law. And I know that there's opposition. Cattle growers are opposed, the assessors tend to be opposed, but I think that that falls in the category of change is a difficult thing. It's a very difficult thing for a lot of people to look to. And that's really all this is, is a change, but it provides options. So my request is that in two weeks' time, you have this on the consent agenda and have another resolution that supports this bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had four seconds.
I'm going to give it to you.
Thank you. Anyone else for shape?
I'm Mr. Chairman. My name is Larry Adaram, Assistant Director at Rio Grande Program, and more importantly, I'm also a substance abuse counselor. My concern today is with the upcoming decision on the detox center of Taos. I know that a lot of you are concerned with the issues we have in Taos with drug and alcohol abuse, and I can pretty much guarantee that there's someone near Smiths or in the area that is in need of a detox. As a counselor, Rio Grande, I am frustrated often when I need to send somebody to a detox and we don't have them. The nearest one is Espanola, and therefore, the dirt county of citizens that need it. We have to send people to Santa Fe sometimes. Most of the time, they end up at the emergency room by Holy Cross. So I urge the commission and citizens of Taos County to support this upcoming decision that you have. And I think there are people working on the state level to get funding for it, and hopefully that will come through. I think it will. Since Tri County closed the detox four years ago or something, it's been a while. We're just at width and at breadth in those detox. Because we can't treat anybody in a way that their detox pretty much, and there's some serious, serious problems here. So I urge you both, yes, pass this resolution when it comes to your hands, right? Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Liz Sum, I'm the clinical coordinator at Community Against Violence, and I'm here to piggyback off that, that we really support the detox center, to bring validity to a really disenfranchised part of our community. And I think just speaking for also working at Tri County and Community Against Violence together on this, if necessary, so to bring it back. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizens' concerns?
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's DS Stevens. Less than two months ago, the county began offering its community, the public, what sunlight might describe as a needly better tool, a website. They're wrong. The quote, "New tool represents little more than one depressing afflictions of our age, no considering mindless consumption." The site is not new, other than the coloring and the rejiggered presentation of overly redundant content that serves merely to confuse and frustrate. This simplistic rejiggering was purchased from a corporation, City Plus Incorporated. Because the rejiggering, there is no way it adds any discernible value to the substance of the content. Content is purposes to benefit and inform the public. And the community gets all this for just a little less than $60,000 upfront, plus an additional yearly maintenance fee of $8,000 a feed, which after the second year is guaranteed by contract and increased 5% yearly. The approximate $60,000 expense came after 537 hours of contract work, more than 13 weeks, or about three months. Salaries range from $84.04 to $149.01. The site is designed in almost all meaningful respects by a profit-free corporation, having what I say is meet this corporate crowd. It is needless by virtue of what I am certain is this community's ability to craft and is often operated by the website in its own making, in its own making, to satisfy the needs of the community, to need and certain and easy access to content that informs this community, to inform us for better judgment. At the very top of the county website homepage, there is a word for it, our quote, "Create an account and increase your productivity, customize your experience and engage in information you care about in code." I'm not dicking on you, if Taos done the same thing. If anyone explained to me, and I have never been more serious, how creating an account with a corporation, proposing a different page, to act in some manner of consulting, go between, or intermediary between me and my government competitively. I do not need my experiences or my interactions with my government intermediated by a corporation, by any corporation. Let me emphasize and say again, I do not need my experiences or my interactions with my government you intermediated by a corporation, by any corporation. How will an account with a corporation increase productivity when I seek out my government and increase revenue with respect to what's standard? Is to customize my experience with my government just what is the nature and the substance of the experience that I am customizing? What will the newly customized experience look like? What would feel like? As to the last word we claim that an account with them will allow me, permit me, to quote, "engage in information you and us need, care about," end quote. Upon all the occasions I stood here, has it ever been indated in my minds as to my engagement with the information that I care about? The proposed book City Plus Incorporated combined the approach, the language, the model, the sensibility, the expression of business transaction, the transactional experience, and business and its trackings of compromised language and sensibilities does not belong in government. In our engagement with our government, we are community members, we are citizens. We are not now, but have never been, and should never regard ourselves as customers in government. We are not customers. We are in government. When we depart from any engagement with our government, we depart as citizens, and avail ourselves of the services we create for one another. The disclosures and disclaimers accompanying the creation of an account in City Plus Incorporated are enlightened, and they refer among many things to the fact that, quote, "Your web server automatically collects limited information about your computer when you visit our website." End quote, and the information is used to, quote, "Systems administration and troubleshooting purposes," end quote. I wonder what that is. They also, City Plus also allows that, quote, "We may occasionally release information about our visitors where release is appropriate." Who decides what's appropriate? End quote. They also say, quote, "The purpose of our interactive modules is to obtain suggestions, ideas, and feedback," end quote. Isn't the site, isn't the reason I'm here, isn't that the reason I'm here, offering suggestions, ideas, and feedback? City Plus concludes by saying, quote, "The site makes no warranties about the accuracy, reliability, completeness, or timeliness of the sites," end quote, and that, quote, "This site makes no representations or guarantees regarding truthfulness, accuracy, legality, completeness, completeness, timeliness, or reliability of any documents posted by users or in any other form of communication engaged in by users." They go on. You are government, and I say, entities, offering, fostering, or supporting any manner of social media platform given today's climate, especially under your knowledge and gathering information about members of this community. Corporations are creatures of the world, fictions of the world, and we are collectively cooperatively as a body of citizens to create, as masters of corporations. We have, so to speak, done them, and we can most certainly undo them if we see fit and the purpose, if we pursue common good, if we pursue common wealth, a commonwealth which all of us...
Mr. Chairman, that's... Thank you. I'm almost finished. As citizens, as neighbors, as bodies, as a community, as a government, we are not here to transact business in the manner of a goldfish here goofball, a goldfish here jackass. We are here to help and to serve one another. I think you should be concerned about the security of the site, about the fact that they are, if it's clickbait, shows up on the site, the town, the place, the town, the library, is not your responsibility, it is our responsibility to advertise on that site. So I, if I were you, would be concerned about security, and the next time you make it updated, which will happen, or the next time this contact is renewed, which can be done in a year, that you include the users, the people that actually use this site. Do any of you use, or are you aware of the difficulties that people face? Ask on, ask the town clerk, Franseller Garcia, about the difficulties people face in using the site. I think we can do a better job. Thank you. Thank you. Any other citizens' concerns this time? Seeing none, we're going to have citizens' concerns at 9:26, on the agenda to item eight. Item eight is approval of the January 27, 2019 regular meetings. Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Farrow. Motion to approve the January 27, 2019 regular meeting. Second. Motion of second is made, assembled, please call Row.
Commissioner Blakenmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes.
Chairman Gago.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is item nine, this is a presentation. Item A is a presentation regarding the Mexico Health Security Act. We have Ms. Shifrin and Ms. Martin. We might have some others that will be presenting as well here. I have a couple other names, but who, let me comment here.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Diane Shifrin, and thank you so much for letting me speak this morning. I'm here with a group of other health care providers, Taos County residents, and a representative of the Health Security New Mexico Campaign to request that Taos County pass a resolution. You have a draft that was just given to you this morning, and I'm hoping you also have a green summary then. The Health Security Act is two identical bills in the New Mexico House and Senate, which are being sponsored by Taos County's longtime state legislator, Senator Carlos Cisneros, and Representative Bobby Gonzalez. Simply, these bills fund a study to determine the feasibility of an innovative statewide health care plan that would make certain that all New Mexicans have comprehensive, affordable health care coverage. The plan, which is outlined in the handout, has been in the planning for many years, with input from diverse New Mexicans and state corners throughout the state. The key features are automatic coverage of all New Mexicans by a state plan, which, with a few exceptions, but most New Mexicans would have guaranteed comprehensive medical and behavioral health benefits. This would provide freedom of choice of providers even across state lines, no more networks. It would preserve the private delivery system, private hospitals, our local hospital, but it reduces overhead costs for health care providers and facilities. The idea is to keep New Mexico health care dollars in New Mexico for the benefit of New Mexico. The way it would be funded is that all the private and public dollars are pooled into one fund. These are funding sources, including federal and state money already being spent on health care. Medicaid and Medicare are one of the big examples. There would be individual premiums, but they would be income adjusted with caps. And there would be employer contributions, but they would be capped. If federal premium subsidies and tax credits continue, such as the ACA, these would be included in our fund. This would allow New Mexico to self-insure. The plan would be administered by the non-governmental public commission, which is geographically representative, much like a walk-in. And this would allow New Mexico to self-insure. Unlike private insurance plans, this plan would have full transparency and would be overseen by the New Mexico Attorney General, the New Mexico State Auditor, and the legislature. There have been two previous fiscal studies, and these have provided strong evidence that the plan will reduce rising health care costs. The Luen 1994 and the Mathematica 2007 concluded that such a plan would save hundreds of millions of dollars within five years of implementation. The HSA has the buy-in of numerous organizations and municipalities, and you, this body endorsed a resolution in 2006. So we're merely asking you to reinforce. Now, I just want to emphasize one thing, that the act, the two bills that are currently before the legislature, do not implement the plan. They merely fund the study, and the plan would not be fully implemented unless it is proven to be viable. Now I'd like to introduce Dr. Jill Ismail, and she's going to provide a local perspective as a medical practitioner in Taos.
Good morning. I'm Julia Ismail, and until recently, I was a cardiologist for Holy Cross Hospital Medical Center. Prior to that, I was with Taos Medical Group. I practiced cardiology in Taos for 17-plus years. I also have a health care MBA, and have managed Taos Medical Group, and consulted on another private practice group regarding their business model. I served on the board of directors for Holy Cross Medical Center for a total of six years, and was recently appointed to the board again. In 2008, I realized that unless physicians understood more about the business of health care, that the changes that were coming would be impossible to navigate, and patients would suffer. As a result of that realization, I obtained my health care MBA from George Washington University. Health care is in crisis in America. States such as New Mexico, with many in lower economic strata and extensive needs in rural areas, are particularly struggling. The reality is that for many, health care is a privilege, not a right. In the wealthiest country in the world, that reality seems immoral. Between 2008 and 2018, 83 small rural hospitals have closed across the country due to financial inviability. Gradifyingly, New Mexico is trying to do something about these realities. The Health Security Act is taking on this crisis by offering an alternative to the current sector, which is clearly failing suddenly. This bill first requires a detailed financial feasibility analysis before moving forward. Other states have faltered by not performing at the appropriate financial and sustainability analysis. Holy Cross Hospital Medical Center Board recently endorsed moving forward with this financial feasibility analysis of the Health Security Act. I believe this is an appropriate position for them to take. I believe this is an appropriate position for them to take. As a small rural hospital, they are obligated to explore all options to ensure that they can continue to serve Taos and surrounding areas with high-quality health care. I hope that you all, the county commissioners, will do the same and endorse the Health Security Act. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Marjorie Lucky. I am coming to today as a physician, as a Taos County resident, who may, is a potential patient at our hospital and for our medical providers in the future and have a vital interest in preserving Holy Cross Hospital. And I'm also coming to represent a group called Taos Unidos, a nonprofit local organization close to 500 members, who are working on behalf of our community. So while hundreds of thousands of New Mexicans now receive health coverage because of the Affordable Care Act, Medicare, Medicaid, and the Medicare expansion, there are serious problems that are facing health care institutions, as I'm sure you're aware. Taos County remains under insurance, and coverage for many policies actually do not either cover or cover adequately behavioral health care, which is a major need in our community. Premiums, deductibles, and out-of-pocket expenses and drug costs have risen dramatically, putting a huge burden on businesses, individuals, and counties in our town, and reimbursements are falling short of the cost of providing care in the hospital. Providers and patients are drowning in this current private insurance system with the hundreds of plans and policies, all of which have different copays, deductibles, networks, and coverage restrictions. And all of this places a tremendous burden and administrative cost on businesses, health care providers, and patients. Administrative costs which would be much better invested in providing health care rather than administration. Health care in rural New Mexico is heading toward a cliff, and it's getting a big push from, in that direction, from the efforts to repeal the Affordable Care Act in Washington, DC. So New Mexico really has an imperative to be looking ahead to provide health security for all of our citizens prior to losing a lot of the coverage that we already have. I'd like to point out a couple of particular benefits in addition to what you've heard already presented of supporting this act to look at the financial feasibility of this particular plan, and that is that in this plan, behavioral health coverage equals medical coverage in this plan, which would be an enormous benefit to our community. And it also has a potential that not, it's not often recognized, and that is because of the universal coverage in New Mexico, there is a great potential for lowering of the cost of all of our workmen's comp and in auto insurance coverage, because it would reduce the health care portion of those coverages, which could result in an enormous saving to businesses across the state, in this county, and to counties and our town governments. And that money could then be used to provide more health care coverage, fix roads, and do other things that need to be done in Taos County. So I hope that you will choose to join with us and with other county and town governments across the state, and here particularly to support Senators Cisneros and Bobby Gonzalez's efforts to pass the Health Security Act. And I'd like to answer your questions that you might have about the plan or its implementation, and introduce you to Mary Calvam, who is the Executive Director of the Health Security for New Mexicans Campaign, to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, commissioners. I am the Executive Director of probably the largest coalition in the history of our state. I feel like I've been working on this issue since 1890. Quite honestly, it's been many years of wonderful input. And I just want to say that in 2006, we decided to go out to counties and municipalities, and Taos was the first one that we went to, and you were the first local government to pass a resolution in support, and you should be honored by that. And your two legislators, Representative Carlos Cisneros and Garros Cisneros, have really been heroes in terms of dedication to a bill that has been worked on and reviewed around the state, and it is something that I think is smothered with green and red chili. It's homegrown, homespun, and it is very realistic for New Mexico. Our coalition is, at the time you all passed the resolution, was probably fifty, fifty organizations. Today, we're over 170, very diverse, from the Aseki Association to the Hispanic Farmers and Ranchers, to the Madrid Volunteer Firefighters Association, the Farmers and Nurses Union, north of the doctors onboard. It is really growing, and I think your wonderful residents have outlined the serious problems that we face. So the bill itself really is saying, let's look at an alternative, let's look at its financial feasibility. I am a social scientist by training. I directed Postures Institute of Science and Finals where we dapped in New Mexico in 1986. I live in the village of Corral, so very sympathetic to preserving environment. But, and I also know a lot about the, how you cost out a plan like this. We feel very strongly, and the bill allows for appropriation, that we go to the Legislative Finance Committee, that will be responsible for this study. We would have to hire some experts. We think that there are plenty of in-state experts, there's no need to hire some fancy out-of-state company that's going to ask in-state experts, you know, for the data. The Bureau of Business and Economic Research, the Hourhead Center, we had discussions with them, would be very capable of handling this. But it's really important for the LFC to be responsible for this. And as you all know, it's both houses, and it's bipartisan. This is a major step for New Mexico, and this fiscal analysis has to be done quite carefully. One point that I do want to raise is that we have been reaching out to the tribes of Cueros for many years, and recently, we've been honored to receive the endorsement of the All Cuero Council of Governors for this plan. So I hope, I'm here to answer any specific questions that you may have and do for that that you will consider once again supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Commissioner. I just noticed on the one that's on the screen and the one that we have, there's a little difference here and there, which is the one you want to see? Which is more...
The one that you received this morning is the newest.
When talking about the, whereas with the Affordable Care Act, there's minor changes, it's more specific, which I thought was a good thing, believe in there, and I saw just, there's just a couple other minor differences we'll stay with this.
You can, you can use a combination vote. Those are just suggestions.
Yes, it's a oral play and should be adjusted depending on your county.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Anyone else? Commissioner Blackmore? Yeah, Chairman. What happened to the 2006 efforts?
Well, we have, the bill has been introduced every two long sessions, every long session since, actually, 1993, the New Mexico Care Plan was introduced, and it's got better and better each time. The biggest challenge, I think there are two challenges. One is the private insurance industry, which clearly is not happy with that, even though there's a role for them, just with traditional Medicare, they can offer supplemental to this self-insure plan. And then also, I think, this fear, the fear of something unknown and major. And so after 2006, less went and, there was a provision put into the bill that said, let's do the fiscal analysis first. Let's see the numbers. And recently, a city council from Santa Fe said, how innovative, you have a big program, and instead of implementing it right away, you figure out what the cost is. And so that's the idea, and I think that has really helped. We have gotten, since 2006, support from a variety of local governments. You would expect Santa Fe, but would you expect Roswell? Several years ago, the city of Roswell actually endorsed this plan. And it's been bipartisan pretty at the local level. City of Albuquerque recently reendorsed, we committed its vows, and it was unanimous, we Republicans joining, six Democrats. So we're very, this should be a nonpartisan issue. This is something that we've got to think very carefully. This is not an easy road for our state to take, and in fact, if the fiscal analysis looks good, the estimate is it's going to take two to three years for the Citizens Board to set it up. It's not, we'll, right away. There are so many complications. How is this going to work for hospitals, doctors, clinics, patients? Is it going to be perfect? No. So what are our rights? I also want to stress, that there is built into the bill an understanding of rural need richness. Reimbursement rates can be higher in rural and underserved areas, which is, I think, very important. The other thing to think about, my premiums go out of state, they're vested by an insurance company out of state. We're talking billions of dollars, maybe fourteen, fifteen, we don't even know what we're spending on healthcare. So fourteen or fifteen billion dollars into a co-op type plan at 1% interest is going to earn an awful lot of money that we think would be invested in rural and underserved areas that can't afford to update their health infrastructure. We think it's very beneficial to rural areas of the state.
Should be better than 1%, it seems like, but...
That, I hope so. I was just being...
How does the 2010 Affordable Care Act tie in?
Well, a lot of people felt, oh, this was going to be the ask. See, you get over the years, it was managed competition, there was a Clinton plan, it was always, always solutions that people thought about. We were very supportive of the Affordable Care Act, and our coalition contacted our Senator Bigum, who was on the game of six in the Senate, and suggested that there be something called a waiver for state innovation. It was a deep concern to many of us that this health insurance exchange model, which came from Massachusetts, wouldn't work here. We're a poor state, most of the uninsured were going to be Medicaid or Medicaid expansion eligible, so the numbers of people who were going to actually sign up for the exchange, and that's proved to be true, were going to be minimal. So we thought that there had to be a waiver for states like ours that might have to do something different. And that section 1332, because of Bigum, is really in that bill, which I think is up. And if you get the waiver, you still get all the federal dollars, which is very important. You don't lose anything.
Have any other states applied for waiver?
Other states have applied for waivers, but not for something as big. Not, yeah, for, for, no, no others have applied for something like this, which really shifts the role of private insurance. It's self-insuring, we're saying, we're going to do it, we're going to take the risk, young, old, healthy, not so healthy, in it together. My ninety-two-year-old dad said, I want to be in a health care school with twenty-year-olds. I don't want to be a one with over sixty-five. And he's absolutely right. You know, that's, in a state with a small population, it makes no sense saying it to a market.
And you satisfied with your current plan, if you can keep it?
I know what the answer is. I know what the answer is, yeah. But you know, I see a Presbyterian sign, you know, choose, you're using the word choice. The insurance industry said, oh, choice of plan is very important. And what shows that people want comprehensive care coverage, they want freedom of choice at doctor and hospital, and of course, including across state lines, Eastside, New York, Texas. I mean, and people want affordability, and that's what we think that this plan can offer. You don't have to believe me, I'm not, you know, selling you the verbal image, that's what the fiscal analysis is about. So I think it's a safe investment, and it's $375,000. That is a fabulous investment, because we don't know what we're spending on health care. And that's, you have to know what you're spending in order to project what you would spend. And so that's the first, it's going to be very sophisticated data that not even CMS collected. It has to be, because the adjustments that are going to have to be up and down for a plan like this have to be very New Mexico-sensitive. You just can't have some out-of-state modeling company come say, okay, you know, national trends, we want our New Mexico analyses, and some of the tribes have said, we hope that you'll include a lot of data about us, which is really great, it's really wonderful.
I'm sure we'll learn something from it.
I hope so. I hope so. And there can always be adjustments made, you know, there, the economists that would be involved have said to me, they're very comfortable with coming up with one cost figure, and they're absolutely right, because there are a lot of unknowns, you know, with what is going on in Washington. So it should be a series of what-ifs, and what-ifs, you know, these assumptions, what are these assumptions, that we're all clear about. And then, you know, the fiscal analysis is supposed to be ready by 2020, fall of 2020. If the legislature does nothing, there is what's called a delayed repeal, the bill is, nothing happens, they don't have to do anything, it's gone, it's finished. Then, if they assign, they need more numbers, test to expand more time, or it's ready to go. And then, they don't have to pass the whole bill yet. All they have to do is remove the repeal section and clearly appropriate some money from the starter costs to begin that, what we think will be a two-year, three-year process. So that's the timeline. You know, I hear some seniors telling me, Mary, I don't want to die before this is the place, but we have to take our time. We cannot rush into the, I think some of you remember the Affordable Care Act, the deadline that they had, and that was really a problem. And the sponsors really are very clear, let's do this right, let's do this carefully. There's going to be a lot of input from a lot of places around the state about how this could work, and we can truly, I think, be a model for other rural states.
Yeah, I just want to add a comment. One of the issues we have currently is the true costs compared to charges by private insurance companies is very okay, and how that ties into these rising premiums is not clear. The fiscal analysis should be able to give us a clearer idea of what true costs are versus what people are being charged, and what I have a better handle on how much health care and delivery within a basic, high-quality insurance plan will actually cost. So even if it's found not to be physically viable, that information is going to be critical, particularly to rural hospitals going forward, they have to continue to negotiate with private insurance companies.
It would be worth the investment just for that.
Yes, absolutely.
Question?
One other point I wanted to raise, and I had had a discussion with your hospital CEO about this, and I've been talking to rural hospitals, and are of course very concerned about their liability. And this plan does something that European countries do, Canada, Japan, many countries do, they have negotiated operating budgets. And what that applies for a hospital, they have a constant revenue stream, it's the real cost of operating a hospital, plus some obviously added money for it, including the administrative issues, and there are lots of issues. Maryland is the first state in the United States now to consider what's called global budgeting, and it'll be very interesting, because they're going to do it within a private insurance system, very interesting to see what they come up with. And I said to your CEO, I said, I know Maryland is not New Mexico, and he said, that warms my heart, Mary, because it's true, it's a very different state, different situation, but I think we can, it'll be fascinating to watch that, the whole idea of a hospital giving a budget... The whole idea of a hospital giving a budget based on the services they need to provide to their community, not who shows up at the door. Very innovative approach. And I personally would like to see a memorial go through the House, the Senate, to explore this, you know, right here and now, to see how we can do something like this right now and figure out ways to help our rural hospitals survive. Thank you.
Good. In the last presentation, I do see the chairman here, he wants to have a little conversation, maybe.
I was asked to speak around the D-Box.
Sure. Please come up. Oh, we'll do that later. Was that David? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought...
I'm free, we're talking to him.
Okay, if you have your time. We just didn't know if you were going to be rushed.
No.
So you're good, so you can enjoy our conference. All right. Thank you for your presentation. We can look at this resolution, have our legal counsel talk about it, and hopefully we can get this thing wrapped up in the next couple weeks. Thank you. All right, well, moving on, commissioners, we have item ten. This is the consent agenda. These items of the consent agenda below have been reviewed with the purpose of voting on our items with one vote. The items listed are for the commission's consideration and decision. We have items A through G. We're going to start with item A is a D and A resolution of the twenty-two, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year. So this, this resolution requests me to adjust the two thousand nineteen fiscal year, adjust foster grandparent budget, budget program, program budget according to the amendment number one. And between Taos County and the State of Mexico's aging and long-term service department, three-line funds resulting in the increase of services. We have Mr. Martinez here. We also are doing an item B, approval of a budget adjustment, senior citizens home delivery fund. This is two thousand nineteen dash zero one one three. Item C is approval of a budget adjustment for county attorney fund, zero one zero one dash ten twenty. Item D is approval of a budget adjustment for finance department fund, zero one zero one dash one one zero zero. Item E is approval of budget adjustment for the Rio Fernando Fire District Fund, zero two zero six dash fifteen fifty-eight. Item M is approval of budget adjustment, Malama Fire District, zero two 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 dash fifteen sixty-one. Item G is acknowledgement agreement of amendment one for the New Mexico State Tourism Department of Little, Little Control and Unification from New Mexico Tourism Department to establish a local Keep America Beautiful grant. Grant number is nineteen dash four one eight dash six zero zero two dash zero zero two six. This grant amount is for three thousand four hundred and twenty-one. And then a revision date is six thirty-one, two thousand nineteen, and this is where the entire grant is issued. We can do that. Commissioners? Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner. I'm wishing to approve consent agenda as presented on February fifth, two thousand eighteen. Agenda.
Second.
Second. Motion and second have been made. Ms. Emo, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Winkenworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Gago.
Yes. Item eleven is board appointments. This is a discussion selection of board and alternate for the investment committee commissioners.
Um, Mr. Chairman, by me, yeah, this was one week ago at the beginning of the year. It's essentially seeking somebody from the Board of Commissioners to represent the board finance in our investment schemes for the treasury. And I would like to represent it and alternate it. I think we get both today.
Commissioner Fabro is currently going here. If you will continue, then I'll make motion that you do.
And I'll accept it, except just notifying the chair that sometimes the multi-line meetings happen on the same day, so if, but I'll do it with her before, as I've done in the past, and she'll get to report it and then, okay. So yes, I'll accept that.
If you want to do, wait a second. The alternative, would you like to include that in my motion? So motion is debated by Commissioner Winkenworth to reappoint Commissioner Fabro as member and Vice Chair O'Donnell as the alternate. Do I hear a second? I will second that. Ms. Emo, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Winkenworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Gago.
Yes. Next item is item twelve. This is the department matters. We have A, B, C, this. So we're going to start with item A. Item A is investment committee report pursuant to the U.S. Treasury as present.
Good morning, Ms. Tree.
Good morning. This is... Good morning, word of commissioners and viewing audience. It's a pleasure again for me to be here this morning to present the investment committee report. The meeting on the investment committee, I held a meeting on January the twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, at twelve o'clock P.M. And the members in attendance were myself as the treasurer, Paula Stansted, the chief deputy treasurer, Marianne Gonzalez, the treasurer accountant, Andrea Cordova as the manager, and Luca Martinez, the finance director, was center alternate, Jonathan Montoya, and Rhonda Sanchez is our new representative from U.S. Bank. And she is the U.S. Bank Commercial Relationship Manager. And I want, if we can bring up the PowerPoint presentation, I presented the second quarter financial analysis. And... Okay, we're going to go ahead and start a little bit with the GRT report. And, and again, I, this is a one-page, and I went ahead and moved around some of the enactments on the cause of the presentation of the way they were redistributed. And we added the, in the two oh seven, we added the communications GRT. And then now, because of the refinancing of the complex, also, that was changed. So I'm going to go ahead and go on the, in the general fund, take the glasses off, because I can see better. The numbers are very small for me. But in the general fund, excuse me, in the general fund, we have the GRT of the third one eighth going into the general fund. We also have three-fourths of the one, of the one sixteen going into the general fund. And then in the, and then again, is there a fifty percent? That's what we should be in there, as of December the thirty-first. And so that in total is fifty percent as budgeted. And the one oh three, that is the excess of the, of the refinancing of the monies that are allotted for the payments to our complex. And we have in there now the one sixteen infrastructure and the excess of the capital from the, from, or, from cap, excuse me, the excess from the capital, capital fund, and that is fund four twenty. And so then the next one is the two oh two, which is environmental GRT. That is one eighth. And the next one is the public works. We have a one-fourth of the one sixteen going into that, into the public works. And the next one is the two oh seven, fund two oh seven, which is the E nine one one fund, that's three one sixteens that go into that. And again, you can see that the percentage is at seventy-one percent. That is bringing in more than what was budgeted. And you know what? Let me go back to the, to the fund one oh three, and that is ninety-four percent. And that is because there were, there was excess money that went into that, that fund that was not intercepted because of the refinancing. So then we have, going back down to the action fund, again, we have in there a second one eighth, and then we have the gross received Medicaid one sixteen, which is not intercepted. And it is one sixteen. And then we have the G two two, which is a buy access fund. We have one-fourth GRT going into that fund. And we have the jail, we have the excess, the correctional, which is the excess of the one eighth. And, and then the U.S., U.S.B.A. complex loan in fund forty-one. That's the first one eighth that's dedicated to that, to the payment of that, of that loan. And then the, the next one is a fund four twenty, and we dedicated one-fourth of the capital equity increment to that, and we have the one eighth correctional. And so the one eighth goes in there to pay that loan, but the excess goes into the one oh three. And so then we have the, so in, in total, we have one point three seven five zero percent. And then we have the educational, which is point five, five zero percent, and fund four twenty-three. And so you total the capital in the educational GRT is to be point five percent. Then we have the regional transit, and one eighth percent.
Mr. Tree?
Yes?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we go back? So just showing on the education GRT, the half cent that they have, they already, will be dispersed to the schools, one little over one point five million as of right now, and we budgeted two point five, so that one's doing pretty well. That's, actually gives them more proceeds than what they have bargained for, along with the new tax that they're asking for on their property tax. I just wanted to bring that to the commissioners' awareness, along with the absent GRT that they have, we could, on the county and state, but that was a significant, so, thank you. Sorry, Doctor.
That's okay. And usually what is done with the excess is goes into an editorial redemption, taking off the law of urgency, or of honestly, so that's opposite. And so if we look, and then the state, again, there's the five point one two five percent, and for a total of what our tax is now is seven point three one two five. So what it did is, I kind of took the difference between what we had prior, which is the seven point one two five percent, and it is the point one eight seven five percent, which is the fund two oh seven, and that's the E nine one one. That's the difference between the two. Then again, if you look at the percentages, we're all at basically forty-nine, fifty percent, which is that's what we should be except for the excess, almost increments. But this is a one-page, look at exactly where money is distributed in the, in the funds in Taos County. And I went ahead and attached a copy for you of the grocery receipts tax rate schedule. Sometimes you're asked, what are the rates for Taos, if you look for Taos? And we have another water and sanitation district, that's seven point five six two five percent. And then again, the Prado Water and Sanitation District, eight point seven five percent. El Valle is at seven point five six two five percent. El Valle Rancho's Water is eight point seven five percent. We have Picolis, we have Puesa, we can read them all, but we have the Taoski Valley, and we have the remainder of Taos County, which again is the seven point three five two percent. And we see that the TID in the Taoski Valley is at nine point two five percent, and Taoski Valley is nine point two five percent. So I just thought that that was good information for, for the board. The next one is our, our detailed receipts for the taxes, which is one of the major revenues for, to finalize our budget for Taos County. And again, we, we're looking at the second quarter, because that's when we send out our bills, and that's when we collect our taxes. And if you look at the DFA twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen approved budget, the collection rate is nine one point five percent, evaluation data, and the budget was ten million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight. We brought in, in the second quarter, seven million, two hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and forty-six cents. So if you look across, we collected sixty-seven percent, and we have thirty-three percent more to collect on the second half, and those that are coming in during this time. The second is the prior year, it was budgeted eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, and we have brought in sixty-one percent, almost sixty-two percent. We have thirty-eight percent remaining. And the property interest and penalty, again, budgeted at three hundred thousand, we're at forty-nine percent, and we're hoping we're going to bring that in. But that is the work of the, that goes on in the treasurers, to really work on the, on the prior years, and the interest and penalty, to keep that money here, and those are accounted out to the state. And so I plot, again, the, the step of the treasures department, because they're really hard. And again, it's amazing what goes on during that first period when we collect taxes. We have money coming in from all directions, from our lockbox, from people coming in to pay the taxes, money that is mailed in, money that's paid with the credit card, with debit card, through the internet, through the website stuff. We just appreciate everyone who makes a effort to come in and pay their taxes. The next one is, oh, no, we're going to go to the, to the graph. And again, if you look at, as you can see by the graph, it's, it's a picture of exactly how the money flows, how the cash balances flow in the general fund account. And as you can see, it peaks at very close to ten million, but it's, it's actually nine point, nine million, eight hundred and two thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. But you can see how it, it starts in, in July, and we have that revenue, and we kind of go down, and then when we start collections, and then it peaks in December. And that's where we are for this report. And like I said, that's just a picture of the money flow. The numbers are on the next page. And this page is, again, you have your cash balances in December, which is about nine million, eight hundred and two thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twelve cents. The difference between last year and this year is, we're shy of eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. The reserves are two million, nine hundred and, and two, excuse me, two million, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. The remaining balance is six million, eight hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. We have investments of, for the general fund, three million, two hundred and fifty thousand. The excess, the additional investments over the reserve money is two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. The reserve, you have a four-twelve's reserve equal to nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars, which dates to U.S. of December the thirty-first, five million, eight hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. And again, you'll have huge bills coming in in January, February, and usually that money is then used to pay those, those, those bills.
I wonder if you're able to just hit Command R and switch those graphs individually.
Commissioner Winkenworth, did you have a question for Ms. Tree?
Yeah, I just go back here a little bit there. So it looks like we have about four million invested, average weighted.
Did you have a question for Mr. Chair? Yeah, just go back here a little bit there. So it looks like we have about four million invested. Average weighted returns is lining up to around 2%. Getting about $80,000 a year. As far as the investment to be included, right?
Yes, I have actually that report coming up in just a minute.
Is that right, four million? We've got about four million invested?
Well, in the general fund, it's $3,250,000.
Oh, and then the $750,000?
Yes, and that in the USB.
That's USB, great, okay.
And, but again, I want to, I think the next one is the end of the, well, the fiscal year cash analysis. And I apologize if it's not visible, again, but for the audience. But again, we have the revenues coming in at $9,201,987. The expenditures, $5,107,977. The transfers out of the general fund, $625,291. And the distribution is made to the senior program, to the detention center, to the 399, the capital, and the temporary monies that goes to the different grants. And then the monies coming in from the grants being paid back are there. And then what I, this still, so what I do, like the world page, something sort of all. And this gives you, again, your cash balance of $9,802,498. And what I've done is also is giving you the cash balances of all, I call the governmental funds, which is public works. The cash balance, you have $232,292.58. Your required 12% reserve is $143,468.17. So you have a cash balance of $88,824.416. The E911 fund, the Fund 207 has $914,019, the senior program, $176,773. And the Fund 226, the detention, $7,583. The grant match has $22,183. The capital enhancement, which is the 399, is $1,651,850. The EMS, the ambulance, $182,677. For a total of the governmental funds, $3,148,92. So if you add that, and you have the general fund, it's like maybe 6.5 million in cash balance when you look at the cash analysis that I prepared for you. And so then the next one is the investment. This is for Commissioner Klein's presentation. And again, we have, you'll see on that first page, you'll see the $3,250,000 that we have invested. And for the, to date, we have gained $31,901 up to the second quarter on that. And then we have in the USDA Fund 411, we've gained, then we have $750,000 invested. And we have gained $10,525. And then the next one, we have the general monies invested also, and we have a million invested. We gained $10,580. And then we have some, we did something a little different with our cash, which has been, which is done by other Treasurers, but, excuse me, which was presented by our financial consultant, Morgan. And what we did is we invested the cash that we have, that we have. And this is the, what you have, the Investments Month Report, and that is the money market. And Paul was in charge of moving that cash as it presented itself, as it came in into our coffers. And so we earned $112,223.91 because of that transaction that the Treasurers Office made. We have any charges of $17,233.63. So our net revenue from that transaction was $94,999.28. And this is totally secured by governmental securities. And if you look at the year-to-date total interest earned to the general fund, we earned as of the second quarter, $126,891.29. So then for the year-to-date, in total, with all the other funds included, is $147,524.16. So I'm very happy to hear that because it's, like I said, it's a new experience for us in investments, but they're gained. And again, now we're in the process of making another investment that is coming June. And the rates aren't as high because of what's going on in Washington. But again, it'll probably be a 2.6 versus 1.6. So, and it'll go out for 18 months. But again, this is my presentation. But I, we also want to say that, that we have, during our committee meeting, we had a discussion on the second quarter DFA reporting report presented by the Finance Department, which becomes part of our packet that we present as to be recorded by the clerk's office. And we requested that there be a nomination of, from the Commission to their Heart Investment Committee. We really welcome that. We appreciate your presentation for the board finance to the committee. And it also serves, it brings a lot of discussion as to what the manager stands, the liquidity, and the position of the county, and whether the discussions with the TID, and again, how the TID has affected, excuse me, the general fund and its revenues. And it'll affect most likely that the rate, it also affects the rate that is the collection rate. But again, we're looking at all of that. And that's something that is discussed. And, but if you all ever have any other questions, that we just welcome. But I would like, again, we discussed the administrative fee that is in the TID documents. And I would ask that the Commission, again, look at that through the judiciary. There was, there were provisions made for an administrative fee. And I would really ask Mr. Agel to look into that for us, that we collect only what is due to us, but also in, when we can go back and see if we recover what is owed to us to administer this TID.
Mr. Chair? So why haven't we been recovering that administrative fee?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we did look into this a couple years back, and we started negotiations with them. I think we had asked for more, and they were willing to give us some of the, I mean, we haven't pursued it since then. So I believe we were asking for 5%, and they wanted to give us 2%. And that was the last conversation we had, as is in my recollection. So we will go back and start negotiating. We probably won't get the 5% as requested. So we probably will need to negotiate down to where we are getting some figures or nothing.
Was, there was no set administrative fee in that contract, then?
But again, it did affect the county and our general fund, our revenues, but also in the work, the additional work that initially was, was done in the Treasury's office, but again, it falls in the Treasury's office. So again, we would like that administrative fee to change that, and so we can recover that, the previous ones. Any questions?
I have a question on the last document, the investments from the general fund. Is this new, or have you been doing this? You got the last document.
This is, this is new, the floor of the cash? Yes, that is new. And as you see, you know, we, the interest rates changed, and the money that we were gaining at different times because of the monies that were being invested. And again, when the money was repartied was the day, turn around, 24. So it was all liquid and ready for it to be dispersed when needed.
Substantial, thank you.
You're very welcome.
And so all this interest, where does it go?
Into the general fund. So when you're thinking of $146,000, well, no, excuse me, not all the money goes into the general fund. We have the different funds. We have the general fund, but the one that, from the cash, that one goes into the general fund. So if the general fund gained the $126,000, that's what went into the general fund at the end of December 31st, 2018. But again, and actually, there's some other monies that we're looking at to invest and that we'll be bringing before the investment committee and the other discussions. So again, we're, this money has potential to bring in money to that particular fund.
Any other questions for Mr. Chair, Commissioners? Thank you for your presentation. I'd ask the Commission for you short, five-second recess, stretch your legs, what is it, five would be nice. That'll be managed, go home. I would have you sitting there, I would just be, go home, bro. What are you saying?
So Chairman, I would for a six-minute break.
Okay, I'll clear that one. Motion in a second for a six-minute break. All right. Obviously, we're back in session. Thank you for allowing us that six-minute break. And Scott did organize the next presentation or presentation. So Department members, this is item B. This is a discussion regarding the road petition approval vote review committee for Camino Tortuga, Camino Roma Azul, and Avenida de Veronica. These are approximately 3.9 miles, District One. And we have Mr. Ramon Pacheco, superintendent. And with him will be Deputy Manager, Adamio, presenting. Mr. Pacheco, please. We're here to present a discussion of the road petition.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, come back to regular session, please.
Okay. A motion and a second have been made to come back in our break. The Senate, would you please call?
Commissioner Bingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Bamber?
Yes.
Vice Chair Adama?
Yes.
Chairman McAdams?
Yes. Sorry about that. All right, Mr. Pacheco, you're ready to go. Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're aboard. I'd like to introduce for discussion to adopt the same rules, Camino Tortuga, Camino Roma Azul, and Avenida de Veronica. For further discussion, we'll be at a later meeting for, hopefully, an adoption. And to approve a vote here committee to look at these roads for adoption.
Mr. Chairman, could you zoom way out? I'm trying to get a context of where these roads are.
You know where this corner, Azcuelas is, Sugar Lake. You know where the airport is.
Right, could you zoom out even more?
Coming east, coming east of the airport, Commissioner. I can zoom out like much of the time.
That's good. I just wanted to see where the US 64 is and connect from.
If you get a little closer, you can show it to you. The road kind of runs parallel to the new landing strip that was built a couple years ago by the town. So you can see the new landing strip.
And it actually stops dead ends at the fence of the airport.
Okay, great.
And then you can see 64 on the top.
So they access it from which may route to get to these?
Azcuelas, Rabbit Valley.
So not give us 64?
No, not give us 64.
No, it's, it would be the wish that eventually, down the road, the northwest end of this road, that it would be adopted and eventually connect to New Mexico 64. But right now, we're just going to the end of the roadway where it has the A of Alberica. So we'd go to the end of that, which cat forces right to the end of the airport, the old airstrip.
And now the main of access is, turn on the light and try and help with orientation. I apologize for the clutter. Right here is Highway 64. And your roadway artery would be taking a point at Southbound off of Highway 64, taking lower off Azcuelas, and then getting into Rabbit Valley Road, which then will get you to your accessway to access Camino Tortuga, where many go on more than, where dead ends, as Ramon mentioned, the fence line to the airport. So I think that should help with orientation. Does that?
Does it help you?
Yes, sure. I'd like to thank Mr. Martinez for his excellent work. Could we?
Anytime.
Perhaps.
The total length of the road is approximately 3.9 miles.
Sure seems longer than that. It's a lot.
How many people live on that road? I know it's a solid petition, but we've got quite a few, right?
I have about 110 membership parcels signed on the petition. As for actual residents, you're not.
How many's up? 300.
Around 300. They've gone from beginning to end.
Commissioner from District One, Pedro Lujese?
Okay, Mr.. No, I don't know, I just think this is a, this is a discussion regarding the road petition approval vote review committee. So that's probably anything other than?
The 300 committee. So what, the action we want the Commission today is to appoint a 3-member committee, which consists of Alex Abeta, David Romero, and Jimmy Romero. Both Romeros used to be former county employees, and Alex has served on our Road Viewers Committee in the past. So what happened after today, the Commission adopts these three names, is then we publish in the little section of task news that on a certain date, the Road Viewers Committee will go inspect these three roads. They will then provide a committee report to Ramon, and Ramon will put that back to a future commission, waiting for adoption. So in the past, we've had to-do surveys. The beauty of this is that there's no surveying needed. Mr. Yarvitz is going to provide the survey to the county, so then we can have those data points for GIS. And so that will eventually come to us. There's also a neighborhood committee for road maintenance.
It's Camino Tortuga Association.
So the Road Association has this road in excellent condition. So really, there's not too much maintenance at this time. It's one of those dream roads that we have for adoption and because there's plenty of shoulder width. They planned out, the Road Association, they planned out this road correctly. And there's plenty of width on it. It's in excellent condition. And we don't see that the Road Viewers Committee would not recommend adoption, but we do have to go through state statutes. would not recommend adoption, but we do have to go through state statutes and follow what they say. Can you also bring up that parcel, the colored parcels, the things you...
I'll put that on the table.
Yeah, so, so every colored parcel, it represents the signatures that Ms. Mahill and Mr. Yarvitz obtained, and that number one is, how many signatures we have?
Seven, eight, nine, ten.
More than that, I'll cover five.
More than ten. About 121 petitions signed, which is this back. So they haven't seen a 70% point.
So maybe, every property in orange, they have a signature for, and Ramon and Ms. Chavez verified that, so that was Ramon and Ms. Chavez's responsibility to verify that.
Gentlemen, is this kind of like the ideal model application process to have the rest of us in our districts, or to reconsider to ask for properties, the homeowners to... That way, I mean, this kind of seems pretty seamless, but I think it's, this is the approach we need to take, and this is one of the key marks for the future. Like Brett mentioned earlier, this is the dream road to adopt. The drainage, stuff, the width, it's got material on it, it's ready for us to pick up, and honestly, all it needs right now is a little bit of signage, and that's it. Commissioner Blakenham? Thanks, Chairman. So then, if the road viewing committee recommends adoption, and you come back to us for the final vote, is that right? And then you put it on your schedule for maintenance. How many times a year will it be, will it be graded? That would be up to the foreman when he puts it into his location. District One, we're looking at maybe once a month. Just because of size, so I'm going to move. That's great. I've got all kinds of roads to get it like once a year, but that's because my foreman doesn't put it on the schedule? Is that why? It depends on your rotation. Rotation, so it can be like a one-year rotation for some roads, sometimes. Oh, my goodness, that's not right. That's not right. But I'm glad that this road will get it once a month. I'm pleased that this road will get some maintenance. District One being its size. And they have a lot of paved roads, and so District One roads, District One dirt roads tend to get graded a whole lot more than District Four roads. Each, each round, each round, a better balance. I know, I'm off topic. I'll get back on topic. What criteria do the road viewers use to make their recommendation? It's width, drainage, materials on the road, and what it's going to be bringing up to power, that's pretty much it. And so, our decision, so they'll tell us, you know, obviously, you've already told us that it's a dream, and I'm glad that we're making this step, but the cost for the county, in this case, is going to be, you know, minimal, there won't be those big upfront costs to bring it up to standards. But is that a reason that the road viewers would not recommend approval because of the cost to the county? I'm just trying to figure out the criteria that we're using.
What I've seen in the past, what I've heard, is I've seen prior commissions to this body not adopt a road because of the amount of material that it's going to take to bring it up to standards. Well, there's a road in District Two that its kind of staff wouldn't want to adopt because all the cost is $100,000 just to bring it up, to make it passable, and I'm not sure that's a wise move when taxpayers' money, because nobody lives on the road, it's just somebody wants it adopted. So, other commissions in the past have used the cost-benefit analysis type of criteria to deny a road in the past.
Relative to the number of people on the road?
Correct.
The cost relative to the people on the road, and that's something that the road viewers do, or is that a discretion that we make? Do they make roads?
I've seen that based on the, I've kind of seen that based on the call of the director, and I've also seen it based on the board. I think Mr. Chavez, when he was director, he recommended a road for adoption, and the commission denied the request, probably came back three, four times, and it was finally adopted, because I think Kate Carson agreed to foot some of the bill as far as the materials and the survey work, and that was prior to my time in the manager's office, but I remember, if it wasn't for Kate Carson's step, you know, probably wouldn't have got done. This body improved Santa Estela, the older condition in Santa Estela, was that the homeowners...
Culverts, yeah.
Supplying culverts.
I remember that. Great. Well, that's good, we have some flexibility there. And the requirement for a survey, is that part of the statute? I can't remember.
It's in there, and there was something that Mr. Malone stressed that we needed the survey, and I think in the past, the commissions have debated on whose cost that should be, it should be the county's, or it should be the homeowners association as an example. Like I said, in this case, Mr. Yarvitz already has the survey, they're going to supply that to the county, and so that's one less cost for either body to incur.
That's great. I think that we have done that in the past, we just said, in some instances, that we would ask the homeowners to supply the survey if we're going to adopt it, and I think that's, you know, talking about how our process should go in the future, I think that's a pretty decent policy for us to adopt, and grateful to Ms. Yarvitz for providing the survey here. So, but we have to get something more substantial on roads being graded, so they can't just slip through the cracks because the foreman hasn't put them on the schedule. They never get graded in that case, and we have to have something more substantial, we have to have something that people can count on. I'll go. That's right, that's right.
Mr. Chairman, could you please provide us with the statute, just so we are able to look at it at the time when Mr. Malone was here? It's rather vague and open for interpretation, but I would like, if you could please email us the statute, so we could take a look, and I want to thank Mr. Yarvitz for his efforts, and I would hope that, I don't know if it would help at all, but it would also maybe lead to more development in that area, maybe we can look at area there for tiny homes, some creative way to develop out there. But this is not a subdivision, is that correct? This is not a subdivision, okay. All right, thank you.
Sheriff Apple.
Sheriff Apple. Sheriff Apple. Just to put, I love that you guys are giving Cody all kinds of ammunition against him like he needed, but the only other road that's been adopted in District One has been Santa Estela, as previously mentioned. And, if you all remember, District One has the fewest road miles as any other district, but has the most traveled miles. With that said, I make a motion to approve the road viewer committee for Camino Tortuga, Camino Roma Azul, and Avenida de Veronica.
Second. Motion and second have been made, any discussion?
Discussion. I don't think we can vote, this is just a discussion.
But I approve of this, the approval of the road.
And who's on the road?
Alex Abeta, and David Romero, and Jimmy Romero.
I'm sorry, could you please say that again?
Alex Abeta, David Romero, and Jimmy Romero.
And who are, who's David and Jimmy?
David is a former employee of Cal State, he was director a few times. He was on the road for...
And also, you have to live in the area, is that correct, or you don't?
No.
Okay, all right, all right.
So, any other further discussion? Given none, Mr. Chairman, would you please call over?
Commissioner Blakenham?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Adama?
Yes.
Chairman Glades?
Yes. And we appreciate you coming to go, not that this is a controversial conversation today, but, you know, I think it's cool that some of these folks that have put the time and effort at the development of these areas would be moved forward, considering this as an easier adoption process. Fortunately, some roads in everybody's district are old, and they're really controversial as to where you can turn around, how you can manage, and everything else, and it's hard to try to adopt some of these roads because there's a lot of hurdles that you got to move through, so as long as we can keep open spaces, roadways open, it's nice to adopt roads like this. You might only have to lay it once a year, it's nice that they take care of it already.
I think Mr. Yarvitz, they maybe go out four times a year, two to four times, and they try to...
That's not bad, that's a champion.
I'll go for that, too.
Cool.
Thank you, guys.
I just quickly want to thank Mr. Martinez and the accessories office for the help in this as well. We've obviously held you home, exactly how to maximize the resources down there, and I appreciate all the help and collaboration.
Thank you. Next item is item C. This is a discussion consideration decision regarding approval of Resolution 2019-9. This is a resolution adopting the Taos County Health Council rules and procedures we have by V O, our health council program coordinators.
Good morning, Chairman and commissioners. I'm here to present the resolution for the rules and procedures for the Health Council. The Health Council appointed members to a committee to create these rules and procedures. This is a working document, and as we continue to promote, the Health Council will have to make some adjustments, but this gives us a starting point to move forward. So I stand before you for approval for a resolution number 2019-9, a resolution adopting the Taos County Health Council rules and procedures. Miss Depp, any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Apple?
Who are the current members? Do we have to consider making appointments after this is passed?
This will be passed, and then it'll be taken to the Health Council, and then we would send out a notice for candidates that are interested to serve, and then we'll bring that back to the commission.
All right, and in our respective districts, sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Farrow. Motion to approve Resolution 2019-9, adopting the Taos County Health Council rules and procedures.
Second.
Motion and second have been made, Mr. Chairman, would you please call over?
Commissioner Blakenham?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Adama?
Yes.
Chairman Glades?
Yes.
Thank you, congratulations.
Next item is item 13. This is a contractor's agreements, MOUs, and bids. We have one. It is a discussion consideration regarding the approval of a word of RFP 2019-01A for substance abuse and/or alcohol detoxification and rehabilitation services for Taos County. We have Elsie Hill, for this, this morning.
Good morning, Chair, good morning, Commissioner. Before you enter the packet, I have a staff recommendation. We received two responses in our published RFP 2018-01A for substance abuse and/or alcohol detoxification and rehabilitation for Taos County, correct to the deadline of 2:00 p.m. on Tuesday, November 13, 2018. The offers who responded were Concord Incorporated and Real Grand alcoholism treatment program incorporated. Both proposals were deemed responsive. This was a second, a 10% second time around, and we put this out, due to the first attempt that we did, we got all packets deemed not responsive. They were missing a lot of the required information or required forms that were not given in their packets. And they submitted you conducted for this RFP staff recommendations toward RFP 2019-01A for substance abuse and/or alcohol detoxification and rehabilitation services for Taos County to Real Grand alcoholism treatment program, agreed, subject to negotiations with the contractor's spending. I staff, any questions? And I also have this timing on me up here to answer any as well.
Commissioner Apple, based on the scores, which is pretty good gap in it, I make a motion to go with the staff recommendation and the word of RFP 2019-01A to Real Grand.
On second, yes.
Motion has been made, discussion? And, motion has been made, second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Blakenham?
Okay, thanks, Chairman. Maybe I didn't, I probably didn't do most sufficiently here, but tell me how this, briefly how this is going to work, where is it going to be, and what's the program?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, thank you for your time. So, the proposal had a couple options for a location. That implied one of the contingencies that we gave to the contract negotiations. There is still some concern from the town in Taos, they voiced their concern over and over about it really, they don't want anything in the town, and it's quite honest, that's what they told us, so that's something we'll take into consideration as we work out the contract. There's also been some good discussion with the state. The new secretary of HSD is willing to collaborate, work with the county on this, so that we're going to take a look on that, and we're going to work with the state if possible to see if we can maybe have a three-way deal on this, but there's a lot of steps and a lot of negotiating we've still got to do within the contract. We want to make sure that we put some contingencies in there, like I said, that we also may put some goals that kind of get the state to step up as well. It's always the same discussion we've had the last three years are very important to us at this point, but we know that we have to continue moving. The award of this will potentially allow Real Grand to have some leverage when they go to the state, knowing that the county is going to support whatever efforts they're making at that point, but we've made it very clear, we will continue through the contract that we cannot fund this for the entirety of the program. It's the kind of thing we want to help get going, get started, and start casing out our funding as other funding is picked up and treating it for revenue they need to sustain the program. So, there's still going to be a lot of heavy lifting in the contract negotiations to get us to where we can feel very comfortable putting out the kind of money that is going to be required to get this off the floor of the menu.
And one of the contingencies is finding a location.
Well, I think we want to make sure that the location will be permitted accordingly, and so they do have proposals for a location, there's a couple proposals in there, but it is going to be important that the town approves or knows where they're going to be, and that they're supportive of the permitting.
Right, that permitting is a political process, and that they unlock the public support for this, for this service that we really need badly. Are the locations a public property, government properties, or privately owned?
Both, I think both. Proposals in there, we've had both options, and I don't think that we're limiting them to those only, I think they provided us three options, we're not limiting to those either. They come up with a better location, as we work through the contract, we'll work with them on that.
Great, and they anticipated, I know it's not been negotiated yet, but a range of the anticipated contribution from the county annual?
The proposal was just shy of half a million dollars for the total proposal amount. Obviously, we want to work with the contractor and see, like I said, how we can put some assurances in place for the tax dollars, and make sure that we're meeting our goals, their goals, and that we can start the money flowing, but on the other end, make sure we're meeting our mutual goals, so it could be up to the $500,000, that's...
And is it a 30-day medical detox, or 30-day social, or are they...
And is it a 30-day medical detox or 30-day social, or are they considering using Suboxone? What's the, what is the type of treatment that we're looking at? From that side of the, I believe it's a bit of a combination. The social is the basis of it, but I believe they're trying to incorporate the medical components somehow.
Perfect, that's what I would say. So, it's social and then moving forward. But there's still a lot of negotiation that needs to happen, and also with the state. So, just being a good partner with all three entities, with the county, the state, and the market.
How many bits along?
Eight to 10 to start.
Thanks, thank you for the...
Mr. Court.
Yes, Commissioner Farrow. Commissioner Blakenham, what was the drug that you're looking at, telling me, what was the... Did we have any suggestions?
I think Suboxone is the drug that everybody, that has proven to be effective. It's effective because it eliminates or significantly reduces the hunger for the drug, but it's not self-addictive, which is a big improvement from methadone, which has been used for decades. But methadone has its own addictive qualities, and Suboxone apparently much less so from the studies I read. And there's been a lot of success with it, and it's probably something that we ought to look at, even in our detention centers. A lot of detention centers use it when they have an inmate who is in severe withdrawal. They use Suboxone to reduce the withdrawal, and then if that's combined with some treatment and some re-entry peer support for a long period of time, it's been incredibly effective in cutting down recidivism.
So, Chairman, Commissioner, with the Suboxone, you still need to have those wraparound services.
Yep.
And I'll just say, what works for one may not work for another person. So, you definitely have to have a variety. There's something that I wanna share with you guys, and I think this is a good segue. When we tell people to make good choices, people need to have good options. And I do think that giving people options to assist with their addiction is very important.
On the treatment and then the wraparound services, like you say, the success rate goes way up with good wraparound services.
This is the start. Thank you.
Vice Chair.
Thank you. How many times have we put out a detox proposal, not including the two right here? Five times, six times? Now, now, response of...
It would be excluding these two, we'd get three, three times.
Three times. So, I don't really understand why, and I'm just gonna rant kind of like the Commissioner from District Four ran into that.
Which District Four?
Road conditions. How many times have we reached out? I mean, you don't have, this is Victoria. Shadow Mountain Ranch to help us. And I am really disappointed with Shadow Mountain Ranch and their policies and procedures. That facility would be perfect, and I think we should talk to the state or somebody about purchasing that property because that would be an ideal location to do this. So, I'm sorry, I don't, Shadow Mountain Ranch, you know, were really, I'm disappointed in you and your lack of consideration for the community and how long that group has been here and probably sent all their GRTs out of the state. We have not benefited at all from their rich kid detox, so I wanted to say that. I also wanna say that I do believe we should look at repurposing a portion of the 911 tax. It was brought up by our county manager that we could do it with ambulance. Well, then let's do something where we have a continued revenue stream for our mental health and substance abuse, okay? That is something we need to look at. 500,000 is nothing. What we've wasted, you know, we could have been using money these last two or three years as we've been struggling to find a solution to detox. So, I just wanna say that is nothing. We should have a designated string for mental and substance abuse. And also, Holy Cross Hospital, that piniasco building, don't get me going. That building's been vacant for over three, four years. It's got eight beds. It's got little rooms for, you know, doctors, and they still, they still haven't sold it. When we asked if they would work with us in 2015, it was like, no, thank you. So, maybe they should donate that building to us, and so we can do something up there. And I don't know what it takes to get the town on board. I'm really disappointed with their attitude. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We're not in discussion, so continue to have discussion. We do have a representative, Judge Shannon wants to come up and say some things as well. I hope I can do a wrap up. But we'll go ahead and have Commissioner Farrow come forth.
One thing, before the judge speaks, because this may appeal to you. When we were in San Fe, we had those presentations from the San Miguel program and McKinley County program. Getting the people help, treatment, counseling, and support while they're also incarcerated is a very important thing. The model that is at McKinley County, myself and Commissioner Blakenham would like to go over and meet and look at it. She's offered as a tool. I would extend that to Judge Shannon to go over there, to gallop and take a look at this. It's a 30-person facility. They average about 22, while they're still incarcerated. But it's an aggressive treatment program during their last 30 days or for longer sentence to get them clean and get them a little more self-respect going and wanting to kick this. A program like that would be something, I think, Ms. O'Neil heard the presentation also. I think it's a very valuable program, and I think we should really take a look at that and try to build something. San Miguel's a brand that started December 15, somewhere around there. So, you know, they've only got eight people in the program, so they don't have those statistics that we need to see that what McKinley does. I also wanna thank also, because Chelsea had this on your plate for a long time. You got through it, and I really appreciate what you did. Sorry, Judge.
That's okay. First, to start, we're talking two different groups of people. We're talking pre-conviction and post-conviction. To incarceration, treatment in the jail, you're gonna be looking at more likely post-conviction.
All right.
Obviously, pre-conviction, we're all aware of the drama over the rule changes in Judge Shannon letting people out of jail. And it's in the magistrate court's rule, 6401, district court's 5401. They mirror each other. And so every day, I'm gonna get the jail log, I see who's in custody, and then I have to do a review under 6401 to determine whether or not this person's a flag risk or dangerous. Dangerous determinations almost inevitably fall with a few exceptions regarding methadone. It inevitably fall on controlled substance addiction issues or alcohol addiction. This is the number one factor that under Rule 6401 that I am seeing when I have to set conditions of release. The greatest danger that we have for property crimes from the opiate addicted community trying to sustain their addiction, domestic violence and repeat DUI offenders, alcohol related. This is what I'm looking at. Then I have to set conditions of release to relay my concerns regarding dangerousness. We're treating an assessment with Real Grand, and we have Real Grand assessments on almost everybody that I have concerns with for substance abuse. Well, then the assessment comes back and says that they need treatment or they need Suboxone. It doesn't list what's available or what's needed for each individual person when I get the assessment back. Then I can know whether the person or their work comply with the recommendations of the assessment. It may be level one, level two, intensive outpatient treatment, be it for opiates or cocaine or alcohol. The problem with alcohol use right now is critical, is detox is a life or death event for people that were detoxing from alcohol. It's a life or death event. A person's gonna have a bad day or a bad week getting off of an opiate, but they're not going to die as a result of the withdrawal. Detox from alcohol requires for me people some sort of more rigid discretionary setting, and it's critical. Going back to the Suboxone, the drug court does have people participating in the adult drug court program, medically assisted treatment with Suboxone. Suboxone is one of the most smuggled drugs into the jail. Its possession is a misdemeanor in New Mexico, so it's considered more along the lines of a marijuana kind of offense as opposed to cocaine, heroin, or methamphetamine, which are felonies. But I can say that as a judge, every day I make decisions and to determine release or no release and what conditions. The number one cause or number one fighting for dangerousness in my court are controlled substances and alcohol addiction. Those are the number one factors which in my mind do lead to recidivism, to repeat crimes, and the volume that we see, it's all along the route to number one issues. Those are the number one issues.
Commissioner?
Thanks, Chairman. Now, if you know, Tammy's working on these wraparound services, it can take a long time. Six months to a year, say, right, with that's from McKinley and, is she here with Tammy?
San Miguel.
San Miguel. Are anticipating, and that's what seems to work everywhere. So, is that something that you can impose as a condition of release, some longer terms, wraparound, peer support?
I will tell you, yes, I mean, I don't order treatment. I order that the person comply with the recommendations of the treatment professionals and the assessment they give. Now, if they recommend long-term treatment, then yes. But I never come out and tell somebody, you're going to treatment, until the professionals have made their determinations. Post-conviction is a different story. Once the person's been convicted, the court has more team to order people to participate in treatment programs and things like that as a condition of their probation. So, if they're convicted, their level or their expectations are much lower than the constitution, and I can say, go on the treatment, whether you like it or not. As a condition of release, it's much more difficult. I have to have the facts to sustain it, and then it's easier for the district court coming over to what I did.
I understand, but as a condition for probation, that would be very...
Oh, and whereas the person's doing 30 or 60 or 90 days on a misdemeanor third offense DUI, having the treatment in the jail and having them do their 90 days in treatment in the jail would be perfectly fine. But you're gonna have a hard time doing those long-term treatments pre-conviction because the court wants us to get them out and do the treatment out of the jail.
I think we're, with proving the RFP is in the right direction, we just gotta be more aggressive. And I think it is, a lot of time we won't try to bring other entities to the table to partner so we can champion this stuff a lot publicly. And maybe we just have to take this next step on our own with an aggressive approach. So, let's see what we do. It's been great discussion. I think there's a lot of passion in what we're doing and where we wanna go and how we wanna help and serve the community, so thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
For what you do. Any more questions? I don't think we have any more questions.
I just have this comment, why don't you take it?
No, I'm done. I wanna go ahead and connect to the goal closely.
All right, so just very quickly, could you please research the Catonong school building? It's a old school. It's been vacant again for years. Beautiful building. It's historic building. It's got a kitchen, plenty of classrooms that could be renovated for long-term treatment. Would someone please talk to Dr. Torres about that, the availability of that building? Thank you.
Pitchers and catchers. All right, and I think, you're right, Vice Chair. Let's tackle every weekend busy that's around and see what qualifies and doesn't qualify, go from there. Thank you for the good discussion, Commissioners. Ms. Sandoval, would you please call over?
Commissioner Blakenham?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Geis?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you again. Next item is item 14. This is the county manager's report for matters. Court of here, are you gonna do it from here?
Um, Chair, I can do it here. I've got a whole lot to say, and also represent for anything I do wanna talk about. UNF Taos has requested to come present to the board, so at our next meeting in February 19, you'll have the resident issue here, and Taos coming to present it. Once again, in regards to the idea about early childhood education, I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. I've been attending legislative session in San Fe, a couple days a week, at least every week since it started. Last week, I was there Wednesday and had some good meetings with our senator representative. I'm on a full court press for money on the courthouse. I'm also gonna go after the executive and ask the Capitol Bureau for money, so it's been a really good preliminary discussion so far with everybody that represents basically north of San Fe up to the border. I've been asking them to help us with what I consider a regional project and a very good project for Capitol Valley before. They can use this as an example going forward as to how you create a project, build it up to the point we're at, and ask for the final parts of the project instead of asking for every part of it. So, we've done a good job of cobbling together, trying to put the CDG, the back of the CDG process, so subjective, and we got through it, and we're using that as an example of why it's a good project. So, just a couple things we've been working on, and I stand for any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Court? Given none, thank you, Mr. Court, for your report. We will go ahead and move on to the agenda, this is commissioners' reports and matters. We have new business to be discussed and considered for future commission meetings, ideas, commission announcements, and house panel vote, inspection report by Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner Blakenham. This is all that I made. New business to be considered for future commission meetings, commissioners. Seen a couple things today that folks have asked me to bring to the agenda. Would you want to direct staff to put that on the agenda for the next meeting, or do you think that needs to be pushed out?
That resolution probably is sort of a time sensitive, so let's get that one through.
We wouldn't have that as a new future mission, agenda item. If you ask commissioners, who wanna ask for next agenda, particularly with their district, anyone? Commissioner Blakenham?
Not necessarily next, but I do think we're gonna, we should address this issue of Taos care and the idea that it could run in the summer with some subsidies from local government as a potentially useful economic development project. I don't know if you would ask for a presentation. The chairman and I and the manager sat in on a presentation at the meeting of the new group, what is that group called?
The Enchanted Circle Council of Governments.
Right, the Enchanted Circle Council of Governments, and so it sounds to me like it is potentially a positive development. You know, economic development is hard for governments to do, but this is, this is one of those things that clearly would make a difference, and it's something that you don't usually get an opportunity to do because you're in a double plane. But since the Sweet Valley actually purchased an airplane and has gone to all the work of scheduling regular flights in the winter, it does give us an opportunity to consider whether or not we think it would be worth it to apply lodges tax or some other sources of revenues to this idea. So, I think it's something that we need to address in the future.
Would you want that Commissioner Blakenham has a discussion item? I know there was a time sensitive date there and a commitment. Maybe we can do, discuss a consideration action item and have them maybe do a small presentation to the commission as a whole? Would that be fair for this commission?
Good idea, Chairman. Thank you. Chairman, on that note, I do apologize for not mentioning that the request did come. We will have that next item. The copping will come right after our February 19 meeting, so I think it would be appropriate... The copy will come right after our February 19th meeting, so I think it would be appropriate we could discuss it at the February 19th meeting. One thing that was discussed after the meeting with the mayor, Eagles guest and a few of their mayor, was the idea of maybe looking at fall schedule as opposed to a full summer to accommodate a lot of the hunting that comes into our county. We do get a lot of people coming from Texas wanting to have night hunts and that would probably be a greater benefit to the county and a place like Eagles guest, a nice complement to scheme. So just an idea that I thought was pretty valuable, an idea that might help us kind of justify and increase our lodger tax a little.
I think we can bring that to those house area individuals and see if they can consider that and if they agree. The smaller communities like Eagles, those requests, we don't think only two that don't really get a significant impact of that, but as a county as a whole, I think it's an interesting idea to support an investment, possibly just this endeavor. So let's have that be part of the agenda as well. Do we, Commissioners, do you, Commissioner Blakenorman and Fabro want to set a date? Could you set a date as it to be announced, maybe to go do that side visit in those two counties?
Probably just the one county here. Let's let the other one get through a little bit, but certainly I think sooner the better. Ms. Harumio, both of us would express that. And if Judge Shannon or one of the district court judges wants to go, I think it would be a very valuable experience.
Definitely, for sure.
We'll start working on that.
Great. Making other, making else for next meeting? If none, we'll go on to Commissioners' announcements. Mr. Commissioner.
What I've passed out here and I'll give Cody this copy of it. The bus stops will, NCR TV got a federal grant to bring our bus stops up to ADA compliance where county has already done nice in rotation as towns. What I wanted to show you in these pictures, and it's kind of hard to see, but if you look on the front page on the bottom, you can see a light fixture above the North Central Regional Transit District. That's a light fixture and on top of it, you see that black line right here is, I'm trying to show you, it's solar powered. So they'll be lit for passenger safety, about $350,000. You'll see the different sizes, the difference in the different bus stops have to do with one has advertising capabilities and the other does not. I kind of like the advertising capability better because it serves as a better windbreak. So these...
Do you have a little revenue?
Yeah, we could put Towns County in there or somebody. So the second page shows the larger ones for the more prominent stops like out here in front and places like this, but this program has been approved, money has been allocated and this will start as soon as weather permits. So throughout Towns County, you'll see these new safer ADA compliant bus stops happening very soon. Other than that, from NCR TV, they won another budget award and I think we need to appoint, so for the next meeting, here we go back, we need to appoint someone to the Finance Subcommittee. Towns County, Los Alamos County and Santa Fe County have a rep on that and if we don't come up with one that passes on through the town of Towns member, then I'll do that. So if we can put that on the next meeting, Finance Subcommittee meets once a month, also serves as my alternate that has been the under for the last couple of years. So we do need to make that appointment next month. And it probably needs to be, or preferably be somebody from Finance that would understand either the Traders Office or Finance. So if we can put that on the next meeting as well, I forgot that. So, pretty cool. I think the lighting is going to help a lot. We have a lot of complaints about people not feeling secure like now when the sun goes down early and the bus is still running. So this will, this will make it nicer.
Bishop Fabro, I like the idea of having that windbreak. It can serve as a multiple purposes advertisement and/or we can local art. In my district, there was a neo-vivo group that went ahead and asked for North Central to allow them to put local art that kids did over the summer and I'll tell you what, nothing about that, but like it was all appreciated. So that's something I think with some of this additional windbreak, we can also showcase them, argue this talent and they would be great.
Commissioner, Vice Chair O'Donnell, do you have any thoughts, Commissioners?
I do appreciate Commissioners that if we can continue this process and then if we have something that we'd like to introduce as a resolution, that we might bring it up at this point so we can move forward with our next agenda so that we will be prepared without anything coming in Thursday or Friday. I think that if this needs to be in the discussion or not.
Seeing nothing else, I would, item C, item C is Towns County Adult Detention Center inspection reports that were done by Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Blakenorman. Commissioners, which... Vice Chair, give all of the words on that matter.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the report is in the packet. You've seen it. I don't think I need to read it. So this will be passed on to Judge McAllister.
All right. All right. Thank you, Commissioners, for participating in that. Next item will be item 16. This is the Towns County Board of Commissioners. Opportunity to convene in closed session. We have two items there. I'll leave them out for the public. This is a discussion regarding county manager position. This matter, this matter may be discussed in closed session under the Meetings Act exemption 1015-1H2, which allows for a discussion of limited personal matters. Item B is discussion consideration decision regarding any litigation matters of J office and the state of J or. This matter may be discussed in executive session under the Meetings Act exemption 1015-1H7, which allows for discussion of pending and lawful litigation. Commissioners, would you push that to... Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Motion to go into closed session after the two presentations listed in the agenda.
Motion and second have been made. Ms. Fabro, would you please follow?
Commissioner Blakenorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Geigels?
Yes. Motion to come back into regular session? Motion and second have been made to come back out of, back into closed session. It is 12:50. Mr. Altio, would you please give a report as close discussion?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we met in closed session under the stated exceptions under the Meetings Act. We considered only the matters that were publicly noticed and we did not take any action.
Thank you. Motion with attorney's report. So who, second? Motion and second have been made. Ms. Fabro, please follow.
Commissioner Blakenorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Geigels?
Yes. I understand why that happened. We broke up, come back in session. Is that going to be like a high finding or something and then they're going to be...
Kansas will be too.
All right. Well, thank you.
I'll make sure it's taken care of.
Thank you, Ms. Fabro. Next item is item 17. And we have two items and this is the acceptance of the county manager's resignation. This matter was discussed in closed session. This follows under the Meetings Act, which allows us for this discussion. Commissioners, Commissioner Fabro?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept Mr. Daniel Cordova's resignation effective March 1st and slide event to B, I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Brant Harumio effective March 1st, having a...
I'll second those. Motion has been made and a second that you put a discussion, Commissioners. If none, we... Ms. Fabro, I'm asking for a vote. The acceptance of the reservation on Mr. Cordova.
Commissioner Blakenorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Geigels?
Yes. The second motion, the second motion was the appointment of Brant Harumio effective March 1st as county manager. Vote call, please.
Commissioner Blakenorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Geigels?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is adjournment?
Vote to adjournment.
Motion has been made by your second.
Second.
Second as well by Commissioner Vice Chair O'Donnell. Thank you all. It's 12:53. We got close. Much love.